We're gonna have one under for DUI, please send me a petition, please. Sorry, we got it within seconds. We're gonna have one under for DUI, next we have a, some of this so this. Thank you.
But I know what I wanna do, and I know what I wanna hear, and I did not do anything wrong.
Sit down a minute.
No, I wanna hear what the fuck that I did wrong.
Ma'am, ma'am, don't, don't start this.
I wanna know what the fuck that I did wrong.
You were driving under the influence of alcohol, that's what you're being arrested for.
Thank you officer, I appreciate it, okay, thank you.
Now, please get in the car nicely.
What that I did wrong?
I just explained to you what you did wrong, ma'am. You're driving under the influence of alcohol. Ma'am, sit in the vehicle. Please sit in the car, ma'am, when you get over to headquarters, the handcuffs come off. Cooperate with us. So just climb in there so you don't get hurt. You're under the influence of alcohol. Drinking and driving is against the law, okay? Come on, we gotta go in the car, ma'am, thank you. You'll have your day in court, ma'am. I'm just trying to explain to you what we observe, our observations are you've been drinking, under the influence of alcohol. Stop pulling back and go in the car. Drinking and driving.
Don't touch me like that.
Ma'am, just gotta go in the car nicely.
I did not do anything else besides here, stand in here.
All right, here, you go in the car, be cooperative now. You'll have your day in court when you go to court. But this is not gonna happen, okay? Now, don't be silly, ma'am.
Stop playing with us.
You know why.
Stop playing with us.
You know why, right?
You're gonna end up getting charged with resisting arrest. Go in the vehicle.
Yeah, go in the car, be silly.
Get in the car.
Don't be silly.
Stop.
Ma'am, don't be silly, please. Come up. Please go in the car, cooperate with me.
Come on.
Get in the car.
Why would you go in the car?
Because I'm not a fucking undocumented fucking bitch. That's why.
Sit in the car. Sit in the car.
Nope, that's why not. Nope, nope.
Sit.
Why?
Stop pushing me.
Poor bitch.
I don't think you're poor.
Yes!
I don't think you're poor, it's got nothing to do with drinking and driving. It doesn't matter.
Sit in the car.
Sit in the car, ma'am.
I am not a documented. I am a woman.
Yes.
I have rights.
Yes, and you have a right to remain silent. Anything you can say is against the law.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're under arrest for under the influence of alcohol, driving behind a vehicle.
No, I didn't do anything wrong.
Ma'am, that's our observations.
That's what you think. I did not do anything wrong.
Okay, well, you'll have your day in court.
You have a right, I have rights, dude.
Absolutely, and I just explained to you your rights, but I also explained to you you'll have your day in court.
I have rights, and you have rights.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, so now again, I'll explain to you again, you're not gonna stand there because you're gonna go in the car, you're gonna go to headquarters.
I didn't do anything wrong.
Ma'am, I'm not here to argue with you. You wanna get charged with criminal charges on top of everything else, that's your business. The men are gonna put you in the backseat of the car, you're gonna be transported to headquarters, when you get there, the handcuffs come off. That's the way it works. Okay, so now, you're gonna go in your co- cooperate, all right, then you guys are gonna put you in there one way or the other.
That's great.
You're going in there one way or the other. So if you don't wanna go in there and cooperate, that's fine.
I will remember this.
Are you standing?
Perfect. I will remember Michael Malham. Nope, I did not do anything.
Ma'am.
I did not do anything else. Look at you!
Yes, look at you.
Yes, look at you, what you're doing. Nope, I did not do anything wrong. Nope, nope.
Ma'am.
Sir, you are violating my rights because I did not do anything wrong. None of damn thing wrong. Oh wow, you are horrible. Wow, horrid, horrible, and I am saddened. I am saddened by all of this. Sadant, saddened! I am so sad that this is what I have to go through. I am so sad, 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 sad. I am so sad, 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 sad. Sad, absolutely sad. Sad, 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 sad. Oh my god, I'm so sad for this and everything that has been done to me, sad. Oh my god, I am so sad, 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 sad. Sad, sad, sad. Oh my god, I am so sad. Sad, sad, absolutely disgraced, sad because, oh wow. Sad, this is a disgrace, disgrace, disgrace. I am sad, sad, sad in S-A-A-A-D, disgrace, oh wow. Sad, wow. Sad, sad, are you, are you gonna take me out of this shit and this fucking shit? Sad, 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 absolutely sad. Sad, S-A-A-A-A-D, sad. Sad, absolutely sad for you and all you stand for. Sad, 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 sad. Sad, absolutely sad for you and everything you stand for. Sad, S-A-A-A-A-A-D, capital A-A-D. Okay, great. Yeah, great, thank you. Okay, thank you. I wanna go home. Oh come on. Great. I wanna go home. Can I go home? Can I go home, please, I wanna go home. I wanna just go home. I wanna just go home. I wanna just go home. I don't wanna know anything else, I wanna just go home. I wanna just go fucking home. You fucking piece of shit. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh my god, I can't take this shit.
Four one, I'm getting six twenty-one double F on the map to the corner of double and road on the east, Billy, sir. Hello, one, I'm uh, can't hold up on that.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't.
Two hundred meeting, Sally. Four one, from the victim, we're looking for a gray Honda traveling westbound on double F. Freeze, is it leaving? Worked it any further, unsure if it actually struck the victim or almost struck him.
What are we gonna do? What do you want me to do? Don't touch me.
We're trying to help you so you can get out.
Uh huh, great. Don't touch me. Do not touch me.
Okay, get out, come out then, on your own. You just said not to help you out, so.
Don't touch me.
We're not touching you, what you said, go ahead, come on.
You know what you're doing, right?
I'm, I'm not aware of what I'm doing, and I'm doing my job, step out of the vehicle.
Your job?
Yes.
Tell Vinnie what you're doing. Call Vinnie and tell him the job you're doing. Vinnie? Vinnie? Tell Vinnie what you're doing. Tell Vinnie what you're doing.
I don't know who Vinnie is, step out of the vehicle, ma'am.
Tell Vinnie what you're doing.
Ma'am, I don't know who Vinnie is, step out of the vehicle.
Tell Vinnie what you're doing.
We don't know who Vinnie is.
Yeah, great, I don't care what you think, what you do, and what you say, tell Vinnie what you're doing.
I don't know who Vinnie is.
Great, wonderful. Tell Vinnie what you're doing.
Please step out of the car.
Tell Vinnie what you're fucking doing! I can't believe you. Everything I've worked for in my entire life, I have never, I've never been this fucking way because I did not. Tell me, I want you to, Vinnie, and tell me. Vinnie? What, right, right, with Vinnie goes everything I say and um, say it. Listen. Okay, great. I do not fucking make any sense, right, okay? Great, I'm sorry, I apologize and everything you say. I have apologized, no. I have never in my entire life said anything to you or anything else because I have never done like, none of this. No, because you know what you want to do and you don't care.
Please step out of the car.
No, I, I have never done anything wrong here. I have not done anything wrong. Can you start, can you tell Vinnie up here?
Ma'am, I don't know who Vinnie is.
Okay, great, alright.
I can't call anybody for it if you don't tell me who it is.
Vinnie Cazarelli, call him. Call him, call him. Call him because I will never in nine million years be disrespected like this. I have never, ever, 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 ever. God, I can't believe this, I.
Never done anything wrong.
I've never, I've never. Call Vinnie, I can't believe this, Vinnie, what's that, Vinnie? Oh my god, Vinnie will say, Erica, what's wrong, and what are you doing, Erica, and I, and I was like, I don't know, Vinnie, listen, I don't know what's going on, I am just. Vinnie, I am staying here, and he was like, Erica, what's going on? Call Vinnie, call Vinnie. Call Vinnie, you're a disgrace. You're a disgrace, call Vinnie.
Please step out of the vehicle.
I will, when Vinnie is called, and I will, this is great.
We can't pull anybody right now, ma'am.
Yeah.
We can, I can pull anybody you want once we get upstairs.
Call Vinnie. Yeah, I am a disgrace.
Ma'am, right now, these are just motor vehicle violations, if you continue to do this, there's gonna be criminal charges.
Listen.
It'll behoove you to just step out of the vehicle.
Behoove me?
Yes. Step out of the vehicle.
I have never in my entire life done anything wrong, no.
You're gonna be charged more charges, you're making it worse on yourself.
I have not done anything wrong.
You're under arrest.
Great.
In suspicion of DUI. Now, you're only making it worse for yourself by not getting nothing to do. You have to come out of the vehicle.
I have never in my entire life been disregarded and disgraced in this manner. And I will stand here and I will fight for my rights.
Well, we're gonna either pull you out or you're gonna walk out.
If you pull me out, there will be video footage, I, absolutely, absolutely. Call Vinnie, call Vinnie.
Vinnie who?
Vinnie Cazarelli. Vinnie Casarelli, call him.
We're not calling Vinnie.
No, call him. Because if he stands for this-
Stands for what, ma'am?
If he stands for you, calling me like I'm fucking a piece of shit, I am not a piece of shit.
No one's treating you like a piece of shit.
No, yes you are!
How are we treating you like a piece of shit? Tell me.
I'm here and standing.
Tell me how-
I am trying, I am trying very hard, very hard, for my rights to be fought, and for my rights to stand.
To be what?
Oh wow.
I can't understand you.
It's okay, it's okay, because you know what?
Please come out of the vehicle?
Yeah.
We're asking you nicely to come out of the vehicle.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Now, can you please come out of the vehicle?
Tell Vinnie to come here.
We're not telling anybody to come out of the vehicle.
No, you call Vinnie, and, and you tell him, why not?
Cause we don't have to.
Why not?
Vinnie has nothing to do with this.
Absolutely, Vinnie has everything to do with this. I've lived in this town for thirty fucking five years.
So what does that have anything to do with it, ma'am?
Absolutely, I have never stepped over any boundaries, I have never stood over any laws. And but you! And you think- And you think-
Perfect.
Your laws are above anything and everything.
Okay, now, you're only making it worse for yourself.
No, no.
Yes you are.
No, you're not.
Yes you are.
Listen, I'm here, I didn't do anything wrong, no, and if I did everything wrong, then let it be.
Then what?
Then let it be. Let it be.
Ma'am, you gotta get out of the car. You have to get out of the car.
I have not done anything wrong, let it fucking be, I love you long time, mwah, I love you. But I have never done anything wrong in this police force, I have never done anything wrong in this police force. I have never done anything wrong, besides uphold, and uphold loyalty and honor. And if that is a disgrace, so be it.
Ma'am, you gotta get out of the car.
Great, great.
Sit in the car.
Okay, I have never done anything else wrong.
Ma'am, we're not saying you did.
Okay, great.
We're under arrest, so you have to come out of the car.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
We have to process you, and then you could go home, but by you prolonging this, we're just, you're just-
You are processing me?
Yes ma'am.
It, this is irrational. I cannot believe you're processing me, I did not do anything wrong.
What we can do, you can get out of the car, you'll get your phone call, and you can call Vinnie from inside, you can call whoever you want.
No, let him call me, let him call me. Absolutely, cause he will fucking be in shit, and he will shitface himself, he's like, Erica, what are you doing? I didn't do anything, you want me to fucking, we'll take, no, I didn't do shit, tell him to call me.
Okay, please step out, ma'am.
No, no.
Ma'am, we're not gonna stand here all night, we're gonna grab your arm, and escort you out of the car, because I know right now.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're just prolonging the process, ma'am.
Thank you.
You wanna go home, correct?
I'm not afraid of anything.
What the?
I'm not afraid.
Afraid of what, ma'am? I don't want you to fall out either, put your feet underneath you, okay?
I'm not afraid of you, or you.
We're just trying to get you to come out of the car.
I am so ashamed of this police station, I am so ashamed of you, and you, and you.
Okay, now, you have to come out of the car.
I'm so ashamed of you.
Alright, okay ma'am, please step out of the car.
No.
Why will you not come out of the car?
I will, I will be here, and I will fight for my rights, and my-
More than that, would you confirm that I just was?
I will fight for my rights, thank you.
Get out of the car, you can go and Vinnie yourself.
I will stay here for my rights. And I, okay, fight, I will fight for my rights, and everything I, great, you think I'm afraid of you? You know how many times I've fought for my rights, I have fought my rights so many times, I'm not afraid of you, you, or you.
Ma'am, we're not saying you're afraid of us, we're expecting your job, you're here, you're under arrest, we have to process you, and you can get your phone call.
No.
You can call Vinnie, okay? You're making this look bad on you, on the camera right now, by staying in the vehicle.
Absolutely.
It's only gonna be worse for you now, not us.
And I appreciate it, if Vinnie calls me.
Well, Vinnie's not gonna call you, cause we're not gonna call Vinnie.
Okay, great.
But you can call Vinnie when you get upstairs.
Oh, it's wonderful, I'm not afraid of anything.
We're not saying you're afraid. We have a job to do like you do.
And you have a right to do, and this is disgrace, what you're doing.
Can you please come out of the vehicle, ma'am?
No, I will, if Vinnie calls me, I-
Vinnie's not gonna call you.
Okay.
You can call Vinnie upstairs.
Tell Vinnie to call me, tell Vinnie to call me.
We'll let you call him when you get upstairs.
Tell Vinnie to call me.
You have a right to call and call upstairs.
I have nothing with you, and you, and you, I have no rights. Great, thank you, I have no rights. Wonderful, and if I have a lot of rights, then let Vinnie call me, let Vinnie call me, I have a lot of rights, thank you.
You have a right to call somebody upstairs.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
So when we go upstairs, we could call him.
Oh, you're so, thank you.
Please continue to put your feet down and step out, ma'am.
Let, let Vinnie call me.
Okay.
Let Vinnie call me, cause Vinnie is so amazing.
Please put your feet out.
And let him call me.
Ma'am, please put your feet out so we can get you out of the vehicle. As soon as you get out of the car and go upstairs, you can make your phone call.
Let Vinnie call me.
He can't call you down here, there's no phones down here.
I don't care.
Alright, so you wanna talk to him, you gotta go upstairs. Plain and simple.
So disappointed in you.
Okay, ma'am, you said that already, let's get, alright, let's get upstairs.
I am so saddened that you are, whatever you are, to the chief of police in this town.
I'm not the chief.
No, whatever you are to the chief of police in this town.
I'm an officer, one of those officers.
Oh, wonderful, I didn't say you're a chief of police, I'm glad I didn't.
You have to come out of the car, because we don't wanna have to escort you out of the vehicle, alright?
If you can escort me out of this vehicle, thank you.
You want to be escorted out?
Listen, sir. I am absolutely.
You're what?
In a disgrace, and the honor of calling myself a citizen of the United States of America-
Okay.
Is not you.
Okay, ma'am, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Please take your right and left foot and put them out here, please.
No.
We're, we're not gonna stand here all day, we're gonna-
Mm-hmm, great. Call Vinnie, I am a citizen of the United States of America, I do not care what you have to say, nope, nope. I did not do anything wrong.
Please step out of the vehicle.
Absolutely, did not do anything wrong. I did not do anything wrong.